I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education in Fairfield to order for June 27, 2017. Present at the moment is Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Ms. Tricia Pitko, Mr. Nick Asa, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cannelly, and Mr. John Llewellyn. I think we're expecting Mrs. Lou McCormick later on, but we will get the meeting started. If I could ask you to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, the first order of business is public comment where members of the public may come forward and comment on agenda items that are on the business calendar. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Jennifer Leeper, 75 Sherman Court. I first want to thank the Board for this wellness policy. You guys have obviously given a lot of thought and consideration to the health and well-being of our kids and community, and I just want to make a quick comment about the reference to recess on, I think it's page E. I was really thankful to see an explicit mention of, for recess, in the policy, especially since the research on the relationship between recess and academic achievement and also social and emotional well-being is pretty unambiguous, and especially true for our youngest students. And I have two young boys, and I worry about their ability to sit still most of the day when they will enter school soon. So, my concern is that one 20-minute unstructured play break isn't quite enough for our kids. And I understand that elementary schools added a 10-minute additional break, and I think that's a great start, and definitely I'm sympathetic to the demands of our teachers who are asked to fit more and more curriculum into their day. And it's not easy to find that time, but I'd love to see the Board add a clear commitment to more unstructured play and movement in the administrative regs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak on a topic on our agenda? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the next one. Item number four, which is an adoption of a policy. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt Policy 6142.101, Instruction: Student Nutrition and Physical Activity. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly and Mrs. Pitko will second it. Do you have any opening comments that you wish to make?
No. Again, I've received no comments, no questions about the policy, so I'm just open to Board discussion.
Okay. Mrs. Pitko, nothing? Okay. Any questions or comments from Board members on the policy that's in front of us for adoption? Seeing none, out to the public. A member of the public has already spoken, so you can't take a second bite at the apple, but is there anybody else out there that would like to speak on this policy? Okay, back to the Board if we're ready for action. Whoops, I'm sorry.
One comment I should have made earlier, I apologize, that in the creation of this policy, which was driven by state and federal statute issues, I do want to think that we did have a number of staff members, members of the community, and even three of our high school students who met on separate occasions with Mr. Coyne to give input on the policy because this really represents a significant overhaul of the previous policy in terms of how it works. A lot of the previous policy has been moved to administrative regs, and I think Mr. Coyne found it was a very good dialogue with the members of the public who came, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that group of about 20 who met with Mr. Coyne for creating what's in front of us now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments that people wish to make? Seeing none, the motion in front of you is that the Board of Education adopt Policy 6142.101, Instruction: Student Nutrition and Physical Activity. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with eight people here. Thank you very much. Item number five, the financial report. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the line item transfers for the 2016-17 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number one. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. Before we ask the business manager for those who are brand-new, which is just one person, you're probably familiar that at the end of the year, it is not possible to have every line item be exactly on budget, on a budget that was put together in some instances 18 months before the last month of the year. So, the staff are allowed to balance the budget, and then at the end of the year, we vote to make the official transfers per our policy that cover it. In the main, we have found ourselves balancing within 1% of our adopted budget where we have to find 1% of savings someplace for 1% of overages someplace, which generally we have considered on $165 million budget to be pretty darn close. So, with that, Ms., do you have any comments that you wish to make?
No.
Ms. Muncell.
Okay. In enclosure one, you have several different reports. I just want to go over what the differences are in them. The financial report that you're used to getting, there's two of them, is the status of the, our general ledger as of Thursday afternoon when the board packet went out. So, that had a balance of 1.2 million. The next document is the one that you're used to seeing with the, I have it in red and green with the, that we reported to you in January and April, and columns five and six are the latest projected balance as of, for June 30th. So, there hasn't been much change. Column five, line 20 is the total of the projected savings, and line 36 in column five is the projected deficit total, a net deficit of 502. Column six is all the money that we had in reserve for quite a long time now this year. That totals a little over $1 million, so for a net balance of 554. The next document is the budget transfer document. This, it balances out to the same 554 on the bottom line, but this is broken out a little differently as opposed to savings and deficit accounts, which is the other report. This breaks it down by the major classifications, which, the salaries, personnel, fixed assets, school support, et cetera, that by policy you have to transfer between categories. So, that's column two are the projected balances, and column three is the recommended transfer from one category to the other. So, that's an explanation of the different documents. I think I'll just stop there and take questions.
Do Board members have questions on the year-end projected expenses and the transfers? Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you very much. So, if we go to the colored page, which is the savings and deficits. We had a couple of, we had one shift here in line 34, which is all other sped accounts. We had held in reserve of 142, positive going to a negative 154 over the last month and a half, two months. What is that attributable to? Because that's a $300,000 swing.
That's all the other, you know, other than the major categories of the tuition, the consultations, and professional expenses, that was the balance that they were trying to hold in reserve, which ended up being in a negative. I don't know off the top of my head what the specifics are of that, but there was a swing. And it's, you know, it's the end of the year, that's, I'm not surprised, the end of the year.
Can I ask, Mr. Llewellyn, it was 176 held in reserve, and now it's 142 held in reserve for the next column over, and now it's down to 111 over.
So...
That's the 298 or 300 that Mr. Llewellyn is referring to.
Correct. I was looking at the 142 held in reserve as a positive variance in April to the 154 negative projected. So, yeah, that's about the 300. Correct.
Wanted to clarify.
Yep, thank you. So, we're not sure what that's attributable to?
What kind of expenses are other, if you will?
Well, on the financial report, there's a little more detail. I'm just trying to, I'm just, I'm trying to look at it and see if there's something on there that jogs my, my memory as to what that would be. I really, I'm really not sure.
Okay. So, it would be line 307, other services, that would have had the swing? In your more detailed report, page one of two, for major classifications?
Right, right.
Okay. And then, I guess, the, if it was, well, I'll stick on this page, then I'll go back over there. And as well as tuition, so tuition, as of a month or so, two months ago, we had projected it to be about 550 over, over budget, and now it's about 700. So, if we look, you know, back into the detail again, tuition is about $700,000 over budget. Is that attributable to a couple of isolated cases, or do we have a fundamental change going on?
Do we have a what, sir?
A fundamental change, I mean, do we have a, what's that attributable to? Is it one or two outliers, or is it costs in general are rising?
At this point, it would be additional outplacements.
It's additional outplacements?
Mm-hmm.
So, is it one, or is it 20?
That I don't know either. I'd have to, I don't get that kind of detail from the Special Ed Department.
Okay, just because it's close to a million-dollar swing, that's why I ask. Between those two numbers we just discussed, we've got a million-dollar swing in the last month or so.
Not a million.
Through the chair to Dr. Jones, could you speak to that?
Yes. On the, on the tuitions, it really, we are adding kids all year long, and so we do have students who get placed at the end of the school year that were not, you know, budgeted that you would have seen even two months ago. And we do have, I do keep up individually, but I don't get it every time a student is added, but we can have one student that can have a significant cost. The average cost for an outplacement, if you remember from the budget, is 112,000. So, it looks like a bigger number, but it doesn't really take a lot to get there.
Right, and that's kind of what I was looking for. You know, is it one or two isolated cases, or did we have another half a dozen, dozen children identified?
I can say our total outplacement number is not, at least as anticipated for 1718, is not increasing significantly, so this is probably attributed to expenses and costs going up.
Okay, thank you. What was my other question here? Let's see. So, if we flip now to the next page, and the next page is the budget transfers. And we look at the, actually, before I get to the transfers, I would like to skip that and go right to the major classifications and go to 129, part-time employment.
Which document are you on?
I'm on the major classifications and summary object is the, this guy here.
Yep, oh, okay.
Under Personnel Services.
Correct. So, under Personnel Services line, 129, part-time employment. So, we have...
129 under Personnel?
Correct. Part-time, 129. So, we're, we are a half a million dollars over budget, which is a pretty decent percentage of the base, 2.6 million. Is there anything that explains that variance?
I'm sorry, you're on this report?
This report.
I don't see...
Line...
Oh, you're not down on pupil personnel?
129.
I'm sorry, you're up above.
Yep, I'm just up at part-time employment.
Yep, okay, sorry. That's, the biggest part of that is subs.
And subs are not budgeted for at the beginning of the year? Or they are?
They are to some extent, but most of the time, our subs are covered by savings and salaries because a person, you know, person's out on leave or whatever, and we're paying a sub in their place.
So, that would be coming out of 101, I would think, though, right? Teaching staff?
Correct, either 101 or 103.
Which is, doesn't appear to be the case here, though. We seem to be right on budget for teaching staff and certified support.
No, we, we do transfers, if we know, for instance, if a teacher's in, in the category 101, and they're going to be out on an unpaid leave, and that's going to save us 50,000 in their salary.
Right.
We will move in that, in that transfer column.
Right.
We will move 50,000 from, from that 101 category and put it down into staff replacement.
Okay, the 133.
So, that's how we balance...
So, that's why you have 1.1 million.
Right, that's how we balance, that's how those unencumbered balances, we actually move the money, that's why the money accumulates down in those.
So, that 129 line, part-time employment is offset by staff replacement, 133, by almost an extra $100,000?
Correct.
But there would be other stuff in the staff replacement number as well, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
There's, there are other numbers in the staff replacement as well. Is that where retirements go?
Yes.
Retirement savings?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so, if we go back to the transfers. It appears as though Personnel Services is transferring $100,000 worth of savings out, and it's just coming down a line to take care of healthcare and pension, basically. And those are both related categories, employee and employee benefits. And then, we have $800,000 of maintenance, which is comprised of 300,000 of transportation, $200,000 of maintenance projects, $100,000 of electric, I'm rounding off grossly here, is transferred up to pupil personal services, where we have a deficit of almost a million. And that was what we just talked about in the Special Ed for the tuition and the other category. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Llewellyn?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Are the Board members that have questions on the financial report? Mrs. Gerber.
One question I had, this is on the, the budget transfers page. I was just curious, I know with some of the utilities, you mentioned the milder winter. Have we seen any savings with any solar things going on?
We have.
Have we noticed?
We have, but I don't know that we have enough data to...
I just was wondering, how much was milder winter and how much was possible solar savings?
We have seen savings, and I'm sure some of it's attributable to the solar, but we haven't been able to analyze how much is due to one or due to the other.
Okay.
Maybe Mr. Cullen wouldn't want to let the last meeting of the school year go without him being able to come forward. Do you have anything that you want to add to that question? See? You've got a smile on your face. I didn't hear the groan.
Doreen's right, we don't have a full fiscal year yet on any of the rooftop solar applications to see how much we're saving.
Okay, all right, thanks.
But we will soon, and we'll be able to provide a spreadsheet for them.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And then he said one other question. The, the transportation says the savings in sped transportation, is that, what, what is that the result of in terms of the savings that we find? That it's the 298 or 289?
289, yeah. The largest portion of that was Special Ed, like 225 of that was Special Ed. That's another thing I don't, I don't really have a good explanation for. I mean, I went back and looked at the history of how we budgeted and what we spent, and just last year, we were within $73,000.
Right, I just didn't remember it being as large, well, I guess through the chair to Dr. Jones, did, do you have any with the Special Ed transportation where that additional savings came from this year?
No, we certainly can look at that. It could be a student that, you know, has gone residential that we were transporting. I mean, there's a number of different factors that go into that number, but we'd have to really dig in and look at that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Patton.
Just a quick question on the, the document with the, with the color bars, the projected expenses, and the 401A pension line. It's, it's not a lot of money, but I'm just curious, this is, so that's, this is, the 401As are only for the new employees since that plan has been adopted, correct?
Correct.
So, we were projecting pretty much all year a deficit, and then we wind up with $27,000 more. Is that because we had an addition of another employee, or like, why would it suddenly jump to the positive?
Actually, there's a component of Dr. Jones's contract that also goes in there. There's a 403B and 457, and we were just carrying an annual amount as opposed to the prorated amounts, and she started in December, so that's why there's a change there.
Okay, and in the future, would we, would we include that throughout the year, or is it always going to be kind of a bump at the end of the year?
Let me clarify, under normal circumstances, a full 12 months...
Right.
...of the pension would be in there, and so it would be, meet the budget, but because Dr. Jones has only been here six months, seven, then there's, it's, you know, the full line item on the budget was not used, and that didn't get reconciled until...
Until the end.
The end.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify that, though, it's not a positive number, it's a positive variance. We're still at a deficit of $34,000 versus the original budget, with the variance being positive.
And following up on that, estimating the 401B expenses in the first year or two or three of having that program has been difficult.
Yes, to say the least.
When, when do you think we'll have enough experience where budgeting can be more like what you really can expect? Do you have any sense of that?
It's, it's going to be difficult for quite a few more years because it's, you know, people who have been here are grandfathered, so it's all a matter of turnover. So, anytime, you know, as we lose people who are under the pension, their replacements will go in the 401A, and that's very hard to predict.
And these are all non-certified?
Non-certified, right.
Thank you. So, we'll be seeing this quote deficit for several years simply because until we get a pattern?
Well, we had a little more history for next year to, you know, be able to, well, and the past year and a half, we have been phasing them in, so, you know, we weren't counting, you know, on certain contracts settling at a certain point and then having it in, and we weren't budgeting for that. So, it'll get a little better, but it is still going to be difficult because it is based on turnover.
Other questions from Board members on the financial report and year-end transfers? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just one question, on the, on the budget transfer page, under support expenses, the, looking at an end-of-year balance of 282, and just to be clear that with the grand total of 554, we already know, for example, or you're already predicting that that 282 will end up going down, if I'm reading this correctly, because on the next page with the major classifications, the support expenses, unencumbered balance of 324. So, the, it currently says 282 because we haven't been billed for it yet, or am I misreading this, which is always possible?
It is 324, but we are projecting a balance of 282. We do, I'm trying to look at where that would be. We do encumber legal services, so we should be close there. There's, there's obviously something in this category that's not encumbered that we know is going to be an expense, but for the life of me, again, I can't look at this and see, nothing's jumping out at me to see what it was, what it would be.
So, there is an anticipated bill?
There isn't anticipated.
So, that savings number will go down, and thus the grand total at the bottom will go down?
No, the 324 is the actual balance as of Thursday.
Okay.
We project the balance to be at 282 as of June 30th.
Oh, as of the 320.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from Board members? A year ago, we were talking about how do you cover not only the increased expenses that we were seeing early in the fall, but also the town is subject to a changing state funding mechanism, and so we are assuming that some surplus will be created, which will be in part, part of our contribution so that when, when we lost ECS funding, the town did not take it out of our hide, but did say, to the extent at the end of the year, you can help us, that would be appreciated. Sometimes we've hit the balance right on the money, and other times we've contributed, and there are other times we've gone to the town and said, we need your help. So, so this is a bigger number than we're accustomed to, but because of the issues in the state, it is actually going to be helpful to us to be able, I think, be able to go to the town and say, we helped, we need your help. Yeah.
So, follow-up on that, what is that, that's, I mean, that was a larger number than I thought I remembered seeing in the past. What do you anticipate? Now, obviously, number one, any other outstanding unexpected expenses have to be addressed first, but at the end of the day, how is it getting zeroed out?
Well, it gets zeroed out because whatever's left in the accounts after the audit sometime like in August. Final report, would it not audit, the final report?
We close in at the end of July, and then there'll be a final audit.
Then it gets transferred to the general fund, town's general fund.
So, when I think of all of the maintenance projects we deferred in this budget year, I'm not talking about for the next budget year, none, and again, I'm not the accounting person, this can't then say, all right, we now know, the bills are set, we have this left, we can still address this maintenance project, for example. I mean, I think of the small amount of the Tomlinson tiles, where we're already doing the 9,000, there's 33 more, and a number of other projects, which, of course, Mr. Cullen would prioritize and not tell us the priority number for, but, you know, if that money is there, there's 2016-17 maintenance projects that weren't addressed. Can that be part of this?
If I might answer that, yeah, I, one of the, if you'll notice down in the bottom left-hand corner, we specifically added that subject to change until fiscal year is officially closed, because as we, we literally are paying, like those tuition bills, right up until this point in time, we've been working with Mr. Cullen and also with instruction to make sure if we had something on reserve and it was frozen, and we think it really needs to be done, it, we will, I don't anticipate that we will end at this number. Yes.
So, the answer is yes. My answer of yes would be, but we are one town, and if we spent it all the way down to zero, the next time we went to the Board of Finance and said, we need your help, they might say, you know, where were you when we needed you? So, I think there's a balance between what we can do and...
And I, in any other year, I would, I, and it's not that I don't at all disagree with what you're saying, but when I think of how many projects we deferred, I would have no problem defending to the Board of Finance that it was money well-spent, this was money that they approved our spending, you know, this wasn't a, a vote in Board of Finance, we want to reduce your budget because we don't see the value in that maintenance project, they've already signed off on it in approving... They've already signed off on it in approving this budget. So, I completely agree with you, but for this budget year, I would hope to see, unless there's, the town has faced something horrible with Hartford, and again, that's still so unknown, I don't quite get what's going to happen there. But otherwise, my preference would be that we zero this out for our own maintenance projects.
And that's presuming that there's sufficient time to?
Absolutely.
Get a project up and running and encumbered and all the rest. Sometimes, it's just not possible. No, I think you and I are talking the same thing. It's a balancing act between the two goals.
And so, then, as a last follow-up, and I know Mr. Patton wanted to say something, will, when, at what point does it get reported to us, what finally does end up happening with this?
In the fall.
So, just at our, that end of August meeting, we'll get a report, and I know I should remember this by now. We'll get a report then saying, okay, here's where we ended, and here's what happened with it?
I don't remember if it's in August or in September, but, you know, in the early fall, we'll give a report on what happened and pending action on, because it's not final until the audit is done, but that's not until December. But I do remember that it's in the fall that we report to you what we thought was final at the end of the year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Patton?
Really, just to follow up on what Ms. Maxon Cunnelli is saying, kind of on the flip side, has this number been reported, through the chair, our superintendent, has this number been, at least initially been reported to the First Selectmen to have a discussion on, well, we have these maintenance projects that we might be able to do versus, you know, going back into the general fund?
Yeah, no, we haven't, because it's just part of our normal budgeting process. And because we were at that kind of $1.2 million hole in the mid-year, we put a lot of things, just, I just call it frozen, but it's listed as reserve. So, what we're trying to do right now are items that were actually in the budget, that if we don't have to go out, you know, to get quotes, or there are items that we know need to be done, because they're just going to turn around and show up next year, we're trying to make sure that, once we know financially we're fine, that we can unfreeze those, so to speak, some of those items that were in the budget.
And are these items, again, assuming if this is maintenance projects we're talking about, do they have to be completed by the end of the summer? Like, when is our deadline to use the funds?
It has to be started. If it's a project, it has to be started before June 30th.
Before June 30th?
Mm-hmm.
So, basically, we'll?
With a purchase order.
Yes.
So, we basically have a matter of days before we know, so?
Staff work incredibly hard this time of the year to make sure that we can be fiscally responsible, and make sure we've, you know, got any bills that were outstanding, tuition bill that you didn't know was going to show up, making sure all of those are done before we actually move forward to say, okay, we can unfreeze some of these items. And they're prepared, they are prepared to go and work on the items quickly.
Okay, I guess I'll just ask that, you know, we could be certainly kept, you know, updated in our, you know, our Friday news blast from you and whatnot, since we're not going to have a meeting for another few months. Because I think most of us really want to know what's going to happen.
Anything further, Mr. Llewellyn?
Just one last question. So, the number's going to fall somewhere between the 544 that we see on here and zero, and some number may be transferred over to the town. From a procedural perspective, this board needs to vote that, is that correct? Because under statute, in order to move it out of a fund, it needs to be approved by the board? This, approving this here is not approving a transfer out of Board of Ed funds over to a town.
No, but we do have to report to the town bodies what you've done here.
Correct, correct. But we're not voting any number going to the town at this point. Good, thank you.
But I don't recall, I'll look, research it, but I don't recall that we've taken official action. We've received the report as to the range, and we've left it up to the staff to manage the range.
Correct.
Sometimes by general agreement, I'm thinking of the 350,000 electric savings about four or five years ago. By general agreement, the board recognized that we had made a commitment to turn that savings over to the town, because it really was a savings generated by the town purchasing department. There are other times where we have reached agreement with the First Selectmen that we needed to put more money into the medical retention fund or pension, and with mutual agreement with the First Selectmen, we've moved it there. We did not take official actions aboard, but more acknowledged that the transfer was going to be happening, and then got the final report that said, here's all the stuff.
Right. And the money that's been held in reserve here primarily comes out of either IT, maintenance, or technology. That's where about 900,000 of the million dollars comes from. So, those were, as Ms. Cunnelli just mentioned, those are funds that were kind of given to the board with approval of the town for expenditure. So, I think if we're going to be transferring them out, and I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't be, I'm just saying from a procedural perspective, I think it needs to come to this board for a vote, because we will truly be transferring, you know, out of the fund. It's not as though it's a medical retention issue, and we're just moving medical numbers over.
We've not normally done that. If you wanted to do that, you'd almost say, okay, between now and June 30th, we have to have a special meeting to take action on that, and we have not normally, you know, done that.
You won't know your balances by then, but before an actual transfer is made, I think we need to have, at the next meeting before the transfer is made, we need to have a meeting. You will not have it zeroed out between now and when the books are reconciled in August.
No, but we do have to do them before we close at the end of July. So, as my memo mentions, we, you know, by policy, we bring this to you, you vote on it, and then by practice, we have always done any additional transfers that were required to close out for July.
Within the Board of Ed, correct. But we're now talking about a transfer outside of the Board of Ed, back to the town. That's all I'm addressing there.
Again, I'll research, but I don't think we've ever voted on that.
And I'm just going with what I believe the statute is, not practice.
There's a new state statute, as of last year, I believe it was, that we have to report to the town bodies. And what we did last year was take this same budget transfer report and put a memo on it and sent it to Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and all town bodies, RTM, and told them that the board took this action. That's what we were required to do, and that's what we did.
Any further questions? Last question, then we'll go to the public. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
I'm just, one quick follow-up on, I'm not sure about voting or not, but I think the one thing that's very different about this from past practice is the number of things we have frozen this year. You know, normally, it's a matter of, we have spent what we were budgeted to spend, we have purchased what we said we would purchase, we have the equipment, we, during the professional development and all of that, and then there's money left. But in this case, we have actually frozen things. And, I mean, I look at just the line of, you know, looking, what are the tempting things to look at? And I look at something like the equipment and equipment repairs on the sheet with the green and the red, where we held off on 163,000. Might that not be an amount that's left? And obviously, I don't know, you know, a decision was made that we could handle not doing that, but again, that's just kicking it to the next budget, or two budgets out from now. And so, I guess, to me, that's the big difference of this year. It's not a case of, we've spent all of our money that was allotted, and now we'd like to go grab a few more things, get a few more books with it. It's that we outright didn't spend the money that they approved for us. So, I think that's where I see Mr. Llewellyn's point, and I don't know whether it needs to be voting or not, but I have a real problem returning this with so many things that we needed, and it was approved, so, for what that's worth.
And I don't disagree with the commentary, but I, we have normally left it up to management to listen to the board's comments and do those final transfers or uses of the money over June and July, rather than hold another meeting.
And so, that's where I'd say that, then, you know, obviously, we'll be able to give our feedback on that judgment call in September, when we find out what did happen with the numbers.
Yep.
Okay.
No further comments? This is a voting item, so back out to the public. Any member of the public that wished to talk, speak about the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the line item transfers, please come forward and state your name and address. Nobody coming forward, back to the board for vote. The motion in front of you is that the Board of Education approve the line item transfers for the 2016-'17 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number one. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, thank you very much, 90. On to the approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 13, 2017. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Patton, second sit. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, the motion in front of you is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 13, 2017. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Pitkow, Mr. Asim, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, opposed? Mrs. Lumacormick and Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes 7 to 2. Thank you very much. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, just a couple of items. Obviously, we're very busy this summer. If you could see Mr. Cullen's huge schedule, we have work happening all across the district, from Tomlinson to Ward. It's a very, very busy summer, and we're well underway. Also, just to say, congratulations to the class of 2017. I was able to attend graduation at Ward this year, which was absolutely beautiful. The weather was amazing. And I just, and I really couldn't quite visualize how all of those people were going to fit in the courtyard until I saw it. So, that was wonderful. And then, obviously, Ludlow's as well. I was able to attend all three of the middle schools this year, just because they had a different schedule than normal. So, that was great for me to see how each school does their, they're very individual and unique, and I, you know, congratulations to our eighth graders moving to high school. And two of the big items right now, we are working on interviews for our special education director, and we had our second round yesterday, have some great candidates there, and we had a wonderful committee. I think there were about 15 people on the committee. It was a, it was a lot of input, which was fabulous. We are also, we've had two parent forums for the Holland Hill principal, and when I looked yesterday, I think it was last night, there were about 45 applicants. It is an incredibly strong pool. We're really excited by the applicants that we have. So, we will be interviewing in the middle of July for that position. Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent on the items that she mentioned? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
These are not on the items that were mentioned, but it is follow-up from the last meeting, where I had put out two questions and was expecting to be able to follow up today. So, just as a reminder, and that's what I emailed you about, one was regarding the 147,000 in the district improvement plan implementations, which you, I didn't know off the top of your head that you were going to get back to me about. And then, second, I had asked about the job description for the Director of Innovation, if we could hear just a little bit more about that. I know, I'm sure that's something that's still evolving a little bit over the summer, but I know that one presentation was made to a PTA, so I'm interested myself in hearing a little bit more about that.
Yeah, and Mr. Cummings, do you probably have that list that you could share for the items that were unfreezing yet?
And that's in relationship to the first question?
Right, the first question.
Good evening, Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Ed. I don't have a list in front of me. I can tell you, speak to you in general, what is on the list. Primarily, most of that money that's frozen is curriculum work. There's some professional development that we were hoping to do over the summer that we may have to push off until the fall, all dependent, of course, on the release date from the state of when they make a decision on a final budget. But most of it is in professional development. We are moving ahead with purchases of materials that students need. We haven't frozen those things. It's really on the training and curriculum revisions, I should say, the ongoing curriculum revisions we engage in.
Okay, if I can follow up on that, but the summer curriculum work was a separate line item of 148,000. So, this was a separate line of the district improvement plan program implementations of a separate 147,000. So, I'm still unclear then on what that would be covering.
Yeah, we actually have a list. I think part of it, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I think art. We held off on some art curriculum writing. We are going ahead with some language arts that we are moving forward with. I'm not sure about math. Do you know if we froze?
We are doing some elementary work in math. We have some revisions to do around the bridges units, the bridges and materials being added into our units. Primarily, the curriculum work we're doing is in elementary. The social studies work, as you know, is going forward. That is the curriculum work we're doing. Offhand, I apologize, I can't speak to the actual changes and what's impacted by that broadheading of district improvement plan.
Okay, because again, all I'm hearing is summer curriculum work, which is a separate line item. So, I just reiterate my request, I would like to know what, because I feel we, as a board, are very vested in that district improvement plan. This is a distinctly separate item on the list, so I am still hoping for that information.
Okay, thank you.
The other question again, could you?
Just to hear a little bit more about the director of innovation.
Yeah, and let me just clarify, too. Anything that has been said to the public is what I've shared with the board, but there really isn't anything, I would say, different, other than it's the reconfiguration of the actual central office, where when, having the retirements that we've had, we were able to collapse one position, and if you want to think of that as meg voices, but they've got different titles. And we are redistributing those duties between the Chief Academic Officer, Director of Innovation, and the superintendent. And so, we are down one position, and that is what was reported in the Fairfield Citizen when they ran the article after we had announced the position. And what I did for Fairfield, at the PTA meeting, was actually just, I did actually a PowerPoint where they could see, these people were in these positions, this is position, is, you know, we're down one position now. Probably the only question I had was, somebody said, well, why the word innovation? What does that mean? We really wanted to make sure that the people who were applying were very forward-thinking, and that they were 21st century thinkers, in the way that they're going to help us approach curriculum, really pre-K through 12, and not only with 21st century strategies, but also just to be able to think about what student learning needs to look like in the classroom now, and be innovative. And we definitely need that now with the budget that we're working with more than ever.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the superintendent? Okay. Committee liaisons on reports. Mr. Asar, do you want to go first?
Sure. Last night, the RTM voted unanimously to approve the bonding request for Holland Hill Elementary Schools project. It carried a unanimous vote through the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM, so I thought that was noteworthy. And the application is going?
It should be noted that about 90% of the RTM all raised their hands trying to second the motion.
That is true. And the next step is submitting the application to the state before the June 30 deadline, so we get the reimbursement rate that is current. So, that is in the works.
Any questions for Mr. Asar concerning the Holland Hill project?
One very quick question. So, in every way, this project would be considered on schedule at this point? Because obviously, I know there's other things that are going on in addition to securing those votes, so it is on schedule?
Yes. Right now, we, it is pretty much on track with the original schedule of the fall of 2019, I believe, completion. Does that sound right, Phil? Yeah, fall, school year starting 2019, August, September 2019, of it being complete. And right now, it's looking good. Yeah.
Mr. Llewellyn?
And through the chair, do you know what the final number came out as, as the cost that's being submitted?
Yeah, the bonding request was for $17,300,050. And then, there was an initial seed money of 1.2. So, it wound up being 18,500,000 in round numbers, and 500,000 of that is a contingency specifically set aside for any hazardous material remediation. So, if that's not needed, there's 400-something thousand built in for hazardous material. So, if that 500 isn't used, it won't be bonded.
And that's a commitment that the building committee made to the various town bodies, that that 500 is to cover unexpected environmental issues, and if we don't have any, then I'm going to not spend it, and you won't have to bond it. Remember that we passed the bond, but the town, not we, the RTM, but the town doesn't really bond the costs. It waits until the full project is done, and then bonds the total amount of actually spent money. Any other liaison reports or questions? Yes.
I just wanted to say, from policy, obviously, our work is ongoing. We have several things that we're looking forward to in the fall with a new staff member, so hopefully, that all goes well. But I did want to just say a final thanks. I'm not sure if Mr. Coyne knew exactly what he was stepping in for when Mrs. Parks completely set him up by saying, I think you would be perfect for policy, when he came on to share the duties with her. And I just want to sincerely thank him for all the time he spent with us. It was, it is a lot of work, and he was seeing us through a good portion of that audit, you know, some more difficult than others, and I just wanted to express a thanks to Mr. Coyne.
Any questions for the policy committee? If not, Mrs. Gerber?
With Osborne Hill, the plans are still moving forward for the fencing as opposed to the enclosed walkway. The building committee didn't meet The Building Committee didn't meet in June because there was really nothing to meet about. They are going to be meeting in July, so if I get any updates, I will make sure that they're included in the Friday packet. And then, for Ludlow High School, the good news is that the windows are beginning to be replaced. I'm sure if you've driven by, you've seen that. And I think the plan is to have about two-thirds done this summer and a third, the last third done last summer. Unfortunately, as you also know, there were some higher-than-normal readings of PCBs in some of the paint in some of the classrooms. This is not an Osborne Hill situation. They aren't airborne. The numbers are, while they are above the low threshold, they aren't incredibly high. But that said, it was thought that it would be helpful to have the Ludlow community have a forum where they could get information. So that forum is taking place on July 11. The First Selectmen, Sands Cleary from the Board of Health, Building Committee, Sal, myself, will all be there to answer questions. It'll be somewhat similar to the forum that they had for Osborne Hill five years ago. But there, it's really more of a technical issue in terms of, there has to be a report that has to go to the EPA, I believe by the end of this calendar year. But it's not a safety issue, but it is a procedural issue in that this report does need to be filed in terms of how they are going to deal with these PCBs. So it's ongoing, and again, any information I get, I'll forward to the board.
Any questions for Mrs. Gerber? Any other liaison committee reports people wish to make? Seeing none, on to open board comment. Any member of the board have a comment that they wish to make at this time? Seeing none, all, say two. One, I think each of you received in your packet the annual November registration Cabe Conference. And so, if you are planning on going, it would be appreciated if you would let Mrs. Brown know that. It might have been in one of the other Friday packets, right? It was in a Friday packet? Yeah. I don't know which one, but it was in a prior Friday packet. You can get another copy from Ms. Brown if you don't remember it. This is an election year, and so, Cabe does allow for late registrations, but still qualifying for the early registration fee for new board members. That doesn't give existing board members permission to wait to the last minute. But for board members who may be on the ballot and won't know whether they're elected or not, they'll generally allow us to put in like a reservation for Candidate A, Candidate B, or Board Member A or B or C. So, it's a good meeting. I think all of us who have gone have found it to be useful. Second comment I'd make is July 31, we have called a meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Finance, as required by state law. And there's no specific agenda item, but we are required to meet with the Board of Finance to have them give us whatever advice they may want to give us regarding the town's finances as we enter into negotiations with the teachers' union and the administrators' union. So, July 31, count on that meeting. That's not the only time we get to talk about this, but it's a required meeting, and it has to be held before August 2. So that was the only date that seemed as though everybody could make. Yes?
It's a public meeting.
I don't, but you're welcome. Wait a second, let me finish with this. You asked, no, this is not, this is a negotiating strategy meeting, so it is not open to the public. Any other open board com, do you have questions on what I just said? Please do. Go ahead.
I don't, because I know we do have a follow-up. Are we looking possibly at adding another meeting in August? Or anything else board-related to that is going to be put before or after our meetings once the school year starts? And I just, I don't recall, so...
We have generally met on this subject either before or after a regular board meeting. Negotiations don't move at a rapid pace. And generally, the first several meetings work, relate to work rules that we're having, putting proposals in front, both sides have discussion, and so, they're really not officially decided generally until October and November. And so, we'll be able to meet at the August, a couple of meetings in September, with enough time prior to actually making final negotiating offers. So that's how we've normally done it.
Thank you.
Mr. Llewellyn?
And who will be representing the board at those meetings?
I am representing the board for the teachers, as the chair has normally done. And I still need somebody who can represent for the administrators, recognizing that the actual vote for this is, generally, it happens at the second meeting in November. So therefore, not to say that, you know, all of you aren't eligible, but if you're not going to be on the board after the November elections, then we need somebody that actually would be. So, we haven't appointed somebody for the administrators yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other open board comment? Ms. Pitko, do you have a comment that you wish to make?
I was just going to add that Phil and I opted to go to the Cabe Leadership Conference July 25.
Any other open board comment? Seeing none, out to the public, if there's any member of the public that wishes to comment on any agenda items that we've talked about, and now that you've heard our discussion, you'd like to make a comment, please come forward, state your name and address. You'll be coming forward. Thank you very much. Before I put this official motion on, can I ask those in the public, the executive session is likely to last an hour, maybe an hour and a half. There's certain steps we have to go through and give all nine board members an opportunity to talk. And so, if you are wanting to stay until we can reconvene and take action, then we will retire to the superintendent's conference room so that you'll have someplace comfortable to sit. But if you're not going to stay, then in all likelihood, we'll just stay here instead. Can I get a sense from the audience whether, is anybody that, and you're more than welcome to stay, the TV will stay and record whatever action we take? Can I get a sense from the audience whether there's somebody that will stick around? Okay. So, board members, we will stay here for the executive session, allow the staff and the audience to leave, and confirm that you've turned off the tape at the moment in the audio. Well, yeah, you should, that immediately after the motion, you'll turn it off and let me know that. So, having said that, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education hereby moves to enter into executive session to discuss superintendent employment in performance in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes CGS 1206A. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Asa, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, nine oh. Thank you very much. So again, I ask the TV person to, yes, you've turned everything off. We do. Okay. So I, we need to move to come out of executive session. We don't, okay, yep. So we've come out of executive session, and we are ready to act on approval of the superintendent of schools contract. There are two different motions. I'll read the contract one first. That the Fairfield Board of Education enter into a contract of employment with Tony Jones as superintendent of schools for the period 7/1/17 through 6/30/2020 on the same terms as set forth in the 2016-19 contract, except the base salary for each year shall be as for the 2016-17 contract year unless otherwise negotiated between the parties and that effective July 1/17 in 2016-19 contract be terminated and replaced by the 2017-2020 contract. Do I have a motion? Mark, followed by Mr. Patton, followed by Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick. Any conversation or comment on the motion? I won't restate the whole thing, having just restated it.
Don't restate them.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. The second one is that the Fairfield Board of Education set the superintendent's base salary for 2017-18 at a 2% increase over the 16-17 base salary. Do I have a motion? Ms. Carnell, Ms. Pitko, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Phil Dwyer, Ms. Pitko, Mr. Llewellyn, opposed. Ms. Gerber, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelli. The motion passes six three. With no further business before us, the recommended motion is that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Asa, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, nine oh. We're done. Thank you very much.